As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. First in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do, sir. I'm asking for two adjustments to the agenda to add under five introductions and special presentations, as five C, the Public Art Advisory Board, would like to present the mural that was just approved by them, and five D, we have a special employee recognition we'd like to add as well.
All right, I have that noted on our agenda. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move we approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, is the advisory board recommendations. Downtown Development Advisory Board.
Yes, thank you. There have been two vacancies on the Downtown Development Advisory Board. Those vacancies had been advertised. People were interviewed. We are recommending that Lilo Reiber and Stephanie Matos both be appointed to the board. Both of them would fill unexpired terms that would expire June 30th of 2023.
All right, any other questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
A motion to approve as presented. So we have a motion and a second to approve as presented for the Downtown Development Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is employee recognition, and we'll begin with James Blaylock.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Rich, staff. I'm James Blaylock. I'm the Maintenance Superintendent with the Water Resources Maintenance Division with the Town of Clayton. I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize the accomplishment of one of my employees, Mr. Jake Keier. December of last year, he recently sat and passed his grade three certification collections exam. This is no big feat for this young man, considering he took a combined grade three and grade four course with his former employer in March of 2020. Historically, the grade three collections exam has been one of the toughest to pass, so I'm excited for this young man right here in his career with the town of Clayton. And I appreciate this opportunity to recognize him, and I appreciate everything y'all do for the town of Clayton. Thank you.
Awesome.
I just want to say I appreciate everything that y'all do for us, and I look forward to growing my career with the town of Clayton. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you both. And next on the agenda is the retirement recognition of a longtime employee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rich Capola, interim town manager. I have the pleasure but also the sadness to discuss the retirement of Dale Medlin, our long-term electric systems director. Dale came to the town in 2004 from Progress Energy, now Duke Energy, for those that may not be aware. He started as a senior lineman with us and served in that position for several years before being promoted into the electric utilities director position in 2011. In his 44 years in the electric field, his greatest accomplishment has been his focus on dedication and safety of both himself and the men and women working for him. Over the years, he's worked on many, many of the projects here in town and built out our system, upgrading of the southeast substation, building of the north substation, the LED conversion project, multiple peak shaving projects that both our utility customers but also our environment, as well as the annual tree trimming cycle, which significantly impacts our power during those storm events. Certainly Dale's done everything he could to keep the lights on over his career with us, and over those years, we've received 17 municipal electric safety awards from Electric Cities. Of those 17, seven of those were received while Dale served as the director. So I think it goes without saying that Dale has certainly put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, a lot of sleepless nights, both on the line as well as making sure that the men and women working to keep the lights on and the power gone throughout many, many storms over the years. He's certainly put in his time, so we appreciate everything that Dale has done for both the town, as well as all the folks that have worked for him over the years, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors. But just wanted to say thank you to Dale and give him a moment or two to hear and reflect on his time in the town. Thanks.
So, Rich read off a few accomplishments. I thought he told me to bring a book of all my accomplishments. I wonder if we got time. I'm getting old, Rich. I'm getting old. I'll get to that in a minute. Get to that in a minute. And good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name's Dale Medlin. I'm the electric director up until this coming Friday, and then that's going to be it for me. It's been a great journey. Obviously, I've got a few things written down here I'd like to say, so hopefully I'll keep it short and sweet. So, you know, I say this with a lot of mixed emotions in my heart, but, you know, there are a lot of perks of getting old and facing retirement, such as these situations, you know, like in a hostage situation, I probably am going to be released, you know. So, you know, it's one of the perks of getting retirement. If I get, you know, I get in heated arguments now, you know, about pension plans. No one expects me to run anywhere, obviously. So, and there's nothing left to learn the hard way. So, I mean, there's perks, you know, to go with this retirement thing. I had a great experience working with the town of Clayton in the electric department. I've acquired a lot of friends and relationships that I'll cherish forever, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I try to give 100% of my time and effort every day that I came to work. Feel like I've been a positive influence in helping the electric department progress to where it's at today. I'm proud to acknowledge that the most important influence in my life is Jesus Christ, who's helped me through all my trials and tribulations. I'm sure a lot of people in this room can have the same testament. Next, my lovely wife Carol. I'm not sure if y'all met her, but this is my lovely wife Carol, and she's been by my side through all of these trial and tribulations, coming in on storms, and basically when the town of Clayton needed me, she was at home taking care of the kids. So, none of us, none of us are on this journey by ourselves, and I'm sure all of you can speak the same about your spouses also. So, she probably deserves a little round of applause.
Oh, wow.
Also, you know, all of us as human beings, we're really only as good as the people around us. I have had the pleasure of working with a great group of people with the electric department. Some of them are here tonight, and all the other departments in town. We had this unique ability to work together, pull all our resources when we needed it, and that's kind of how we survived, really. And here are just a few. I just want to acknowledge a few people that I owe a deep debt of gratitude to help me get through this journey and have a successful career. Not going to, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to name them all, just a few, just a few. So, Mr. Steve Biggs, obviously I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge him. I miss him. I'm sure all of us miss him too today. Can't say enough of good words about what Steve did for me and my career and helping me along. Once in a while spanking my hand, you know, keeping me on the right track, and, but he was a good manager. I can say that. Adam Lindsay, Nancy Medlin, Tim Simpson, Rich Capola, Penny Adams, Ann Gane, Barry Rose. I know a lot of y'all remember Barry. Had to go out on disability in a car wreck. Matt Keen, I think Matt's here tonight, Superintendent of Electric Department. John Huber, Steve Blasko, Johnny Stanley. Johnny helped me write the accomplishments here, by the way. So, you know, this will be kind of long. Blake Mills, Bob Clifford, some of my contractors, Ed Thomas, Tony Pierce, all the past council members and present council members. Couldn't have done it without you. I know y'all might get some credit for how hard you work, but we really, the people that work here in town, we know the efforts y'all put in. We appreciate it. We couldn't do it without you. Last but not least, and I kind of, I kind of grinded on whether to say this or not, except for one occasion involving Mrs. Bass's large oak tree across the street here, I must say the Honorable Mayor McLeod has always been supportive of me personally and my entire department. You remember that, Mr. Mayor?
Like it was yesterday.
I'm not, I like not ever got those trees cut. You know that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Had Miss Bass had everything perfect, and Mr. Mayor stopped in and put his two cents in there. So, some of my accomplishments, I'm going to, Rich already said them, so I'm not going to read them again, but I am proud of the safety aspect of our department. So I'll just reiterate that. Safety, I mean, without safety, if these guys don't go home in the afternoon like they come in the morning, everything else, we were not successful. So, safety is always our number one goal. And I do think we were very productive in reaching a lot of our goals that we set throughout the year. I'll truly miss all of you and would definitely cherish the time I've had with you. Thanks. God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think Dale got ahead of himself. I believe this is where you challenged him to the foot race? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Turn things around. Now, Rich, why don't you come over here? I can keep my eye on you. So, when I became the mayor, our superintendent for the electric, the director for the electric department pretty soon retires, and I'm like, oh, Lord, help us. And a little bit later, I see Nancy Medlin in the hallway, and I said, Nancy, tell me about this new man that's going to come on board and run this electrical department. She said, well, Mayor, all I can tell you, he's got a pretty good last name, because she obviously was a Medlin, and he was too. And I said, well, Nancy, I'll just have to take you at your word for that. And it has turned out to be a true wonderful experience, but a complete and total asset to our hometown, to my hometown and to our town. And we can't thank you enough for what you've done for us. Now, I don't know how many in the public realize, but the value of your electrical system in a municipality is much like the value of your home, and the more you put into it, and the more you upkeep it, and the more that you nurture it, and you expand it, and you grow it, the greater it becomes in value. And we have been blessed in Clayton to have exceptional growth, to be able to expand our utility systems all across town, and a large part of that is due to Dale Medlin. So Dale, I wish you the very best in your retirement, and, you know, he's going to be at home a lot more. So, I know you're kind, but you're not. There's balance in every relationship. I couldn't agree with you more. But we wish you the very best. And I'd like to present this to you, and it says, "With our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor Dale Medlin for over 17 years of service and dedication to the town of Clayton. Your achievements are numerous and will never be forgotten. Thank you for always keeping the lights on. November of 2004 to April 1st, 2022." Congratulations, my friend. I ain't done yet. I'll dismiss you. I can dismiss you until Friday, and then you can dismiss me forever. No, right now, I'd like to ask all of our electrical crew, if you'll just come up front. We want to get a big picture of this. And I think it's worth repeating that I would love to have one of these books of accomplishments when I retire. It's not nearly going to be that thick, but we're going to add some fluff into that. But Dale, one more thing I want to share with you. You did such a great job for the town of Clayton. We want you to have the box the award goes into, but again, thank you.
I want to just personally thank Dale, and I want to thank Mrs. Medlin, because the life that he chose, a career as much like that of a firefighter, police officer, anybody, it's just a public service.
And, I'm sorry, it's a public service, and you have to deal with them being away at night, weekends, holidays. The power goes out on Christmas too sometimes, and any other holidays. So, always when we have these opportunities and the spouse comes, I want to make sure I thank the spouse, because we appreciate you giving freely of him. And on a comical note, I hope the cameras have captured you tonight, because for so long, a lot of people thought that Nancy Medlin was his wife because of the same last name, and we always joked about that for many years. So, it's good to see you, good for you to be here, and you deserve some spotlight, too.
Exactly. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Perfect. Okay, then we're going to move along, and our next item on the agenda is the Public Art Advisory Board.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and staff. Well, I couldn't do a thing without. I love them all. But we're, Patrick and I are here together tonight to show you the new mural that's going to go up, and I want to give you a very brief, and I know some of you, it's hard to believe that I would do anything very briefly, but just to give you a little bit background, two years ago, after we had already had this, we had the sculpture program in place, we had the, you know, Greenway, and we really wanted to do something else to enhance the town and make it, you know, more exciting to come to. We asked Jody about being able to have a mural program. Many towns have done it, and so he agreed to it. So, we set up a subcommittee to write and worked very closely with the town. That was our objective, to write guidelines and criteria as to how that would take place. Clark Hippolito and Kathleen Nobles, who both sit on the Public Art Advisory Board along with myself, I'm still not sure what I did, but wrote they, from the artist's perspective, on this criteria. And then Patrick, and I'm leaving that part to him, they were just immensely helpful in doing it all, because our whole goal was, let's do it right. It's got to be classy, and it's got to be done right. So, that just gives you a little bit of a background there on where, how we got to here. But right now, I want to show you. This is going to be, the first ones who wanted one was Atlas Stark. They're the ones who purchased the Barber Building, and they happen to know Clark. Clark, by the way, and I'm going to send you where you can go to his website, because I don't think you understand who we have on this Public Art Advisory Board and who's doing this. Clark is known all over the world, and he has done murals all over the country. He was just asked, and he did a mural out for the Napa Valley, one of the Napa Valley vineyards. Two other vineyards are asking to have him come out and do one, and he's also been asked to go to Las Vegas to do one. So, this isn't just some local artist. We are amazingly thankful to have him. This is the one, now, he, he worked with them. The idea was to show an initial, and he worked with Atlas Stark to come up with the final version of this. It's basically decorative. We have, and Patrick will tell you about the criteria that we have. It can be history, or it can be other things, but Patrick will tell you what it can't be, all right? And we were very strict about that. And even Clark has a relationship with these guys, because he's done work with them before, and so he was very strict in telling them, I know you want it, but you can't have it, you know? And he put his, you know, his job possibilities at, you know, not knowing where they might go, although I didn't think there'd be a problem. So, they came up with, they loved this one. The face is just adding some humanity to it. The other is decoration. It doesn't represent anything that takes place in that restaurant, anything about that, but it's going to be absolutely stunning. It's going to go on the side of the building of where he has his outdoor part of the restaurant, right above that, and it's going to encompass that whole side there. So, it's going to be really beautiful. And I just want to, there's Clark, and that's one of the ones he did for downtown, as you can see it. It's huge. But to see more of Clark's amazing work, write that down. It's, you know, that address right there, because when you go in the gallery, you won't even believe it. He's even done guitars for very well-known guitar players. So, he's done work for films for all. So, but I encourage you to go on there. We are very excited about seeing this. And again, I'd like Patrick to explain a little bit from the town side of it, and again, we have had a great working relationship with the town and really, really appreciate everything that you guys have done to help us with this.
Thank you. And before you get started, Patrick, Sarah, would you hand me my blue mask right there on that table? Because the mayor is feeling a little naked up here. Thank you. So kind. This is going to cost me another mural. Thank you. I'm sorry, Patrick. Thank you.
No worries, Mayor. Patrick Pierce, second public development director. So, in coming on board here back in 2000, this was, I think, a nascent kind of project, getting these guidelines set up. Had a good chance to work with our former PO and others on this and getting it going. I think it was December of 2020. We came before you, Sarah and I, with the guidelines. Again, we work closely with the Public Art Advisory Board. A few of the key criteria here, we're coming in and just making sure, and our department is kind of receiving the application, that the building owner's happy with it, that they're moving forward with it, they're all signed off. Two other important departments to check on, we're in, checking with planning and zoning, make sure that, a key piece of this is that these cannot be advertising, so they need to be really art and not advertising, so they don't fall into sign code and all that fun process that goes along with that. So, the second piece is inspections and in terms of building materials. So, we want to make sure that if anything was installed, this is going to be, I will say, paint and spray paint and such, but if someone was to do mosaics or some other thing, that they wouldn't have anything that would, you know, potentially fall off a wall and hurt someone. So, both of those boxes have been checked. Both of them said that they were comfortable going forward with this, which means we're comfortable going for this, and I think it's going to be an awesome addition to downtown. I'm looking forward to seeing more public art like this on the sides of buildings, and just thank you all for the program. I think it's going to be very dynamic and something that'll continue to make downtown Clayton a very vibrant place to be. So, thank you.
Just one last thing. If, this is not the first mural that Clark has done here, but this is the first mural under this program. If you're coming from Shotwell into town and you go under the railroad tracks there, and on Josh Davis's construction building right there with the tractor and the sunflowers, he did that in one day with spray paint. It's the spray paint that he uses is one that will never come off. Okay, so you've actually seen part of his work, and so we're pretty excited about that, and now with this. Thank you.
I just, on that, I'd add one more thing. I think we had a conversation today. I think he's done murals. I'm trying to remember the last one he was talking about, but he hasn't had to do any touch-up work, and he's got several that have been 17, 18 years old and continue. So, in terms of longevity and maintenance, it's something they are committed to, but something based on the mediums he uses, I don't expect that there will be a need for that, which is fantastic, because we want something to endure and be something fantastic that continues to grow with us and stay in its nice form, so.
And will we, will we be having this process videoed so we can, like, document it for future?
Yes, right from the beginning. And they aren't going to put a scaffold up for him. He is going to be actually hanging on ladders from the top of the building, which I'm certainly glad it's him and not me, but he is, yeah. So, they can't do the scaffolding anymore, but Clark has done it. He's, he's not worried about any of that. But yes, it's going to be videoed from the very beginning to the very end, so you will have a record of it.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Questions or comments? We appreciate the good work all of you are doing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And up next on our agenda is a special employee recognition.
Mayor, Council, Deputy Fire Chief Matt Sutford. I don't know how, if y'all understand how hard it is to surprise a firefighter, especially one that has 47 years. one that has 47 years with the fire department. So Chief Barbie, I need you to put on your fire chief hat for a minute and take off to here, deputy town manager, come on up. Because he probably wouldn't let this happen, and so it took a bunch of us to try to pull it off in time. So some of y'all were, a week and a half ago, we went to the Fire Chiefs Conference. Chiefs from all over the state come. Some of y'all didn't know, from about the mid-'90s until the mid-2000s, Chief Barbie served on multiple executive boards, and he became the chief, president of the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Association. It's a big accomplishment. So while we were at the conference, they presented him his lifetime membership and his past president's ring. So we want to let that pass besides just putting it on social media. So tonight, myself, town staff, and the council want to recognize you. Thank you for everything you've done for the town, the department, me, and the state. So Mayor, you might come down here.
Sure. This is not surprising to me. Not that I had anything to do with it. I want, I don't want to be, that be held against me in the future, but I would like to present this certificate of achievement to you, and it says, "This certificate is proudly presented for the outstanding achievement to Lee Barbie, awarded for excellence in his field by the mayor and the town council on this day of February 7th, 2022." We can't thank you enough for your leadership and all the great work you've done for our community. And I'm going to give you the mic, and I'm going to let you show everybody your ring.
I do, ever. Excuse me. I'm proud to wear this ring. All the things I've done in my career as fire chief, I've done it for my community. What I've done in the county, regional, state, has been for the people that I serve, and I do it very proudly. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And Matt, will you fix that microphone for me? I think it's wonderful that we get to share the accomplishments of everybody with the town of Clayton. And so often, we think he's just a fire chief, or in this case, he is the fire chief. And to know how well this town is represented, represented in regional, in state, federal participation in doing what they do so well and taking it to the next level for their entire professional organization. And I couldn't be more proud to have staff like that working for the town of Clayton that is not only doing good work right here in our own backyard, but is helping other regional and statewide to be at their best, too. So thank you, Lee Barbie. All right, up next is our first public hearing, and it's 2021-141-RZ, Cloud Break Investments Rezoning.
Good evening, council, members of the public. My name is Aaron Pritchard. I am a planner two of the town's planning department. This is, I think, the second time I've been before you. The first was a long time ago, shortly after I began as a staff introduction. So it's good to be back, and I'm sure I'll see you more in the future. So this rezoning is for a piece of property that was along, that is along, Everett Avenue in the town, not far away from here, between East Champion Street and South Bowling Street. You can see on your screen an aerial map of the property in question. It's two parcels. Total size is about a quarter of an acre, just over a quarter. The request from the applicant is to rezone from R8 zoning, that's single-family residential, 8,000 square feet minimum, to single-family residential six, R6, which is 6,000 square foot minimum lot. That is the highest-density residential zoning district in the town. You'll see here, the top map is the current zoning, so it shows R8 there. The proposal is to have those lots both become R6. The star is where I placed the notice sign, so the general statutes as well as town ordinances have requirements as far as public notices, and one of those requirements is placing a sign on the property. You can see a photo I took here. So one of the important things when we talk about rezones is to make sure that it's consistent with the town's future land use map and the comprehensive growth plan. I do believe that this rezone is consistent with the future land use map. So I've included here a few goals, policies, and strategies from the plan. Goal LU1, preserving Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development, managing future growth, reviewing development proposals for consistency with the future land use map. As I said, this is consistent with the future land use map, which calls for high-density residential at this, at this location. Goal LU3, encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes to meet the needs of various income levels, families, sizes, and ages. Encouraging a range of housing types is important to ensure that you have a diverse supply of housing, not just, you know, kind of the same stuff everywhere. So strategy LU3.1.4 calls for requiring a mix of lot sizes in some areas and targeting areas that could be high-density residential. Here's a photograph of the future land use map. As you can see, it calls for high-density residential with a community mixed-use overlay district on top of it. And finally, so staff recommends approval of the rezoning, and this has actually been to planning board. It went to the planning board meeting in late December where they recommended approval of the rezoning. So, yeah, so it's on the agenda tonight for public hearing, and our hope is that after the public hearing concludes, that you will render a decision. I will note one thing on the decision. Printed out a few things from the UDC. So when you make your decision, the UDC, I just want to remind you, states that councils shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town and explaining why the council considers the action to be taken to be reasonable and in the public interest. So I had the idea of basically just leaving this slide up for your benefit so that when you are rendering your decision, depending on how, what you decide, you can just reference this if you like, and that should satisfy that requirement. So happy to answer any questions, and that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Ms. Archer?
Thank you for the presentation. Just to make sure I get the language correct in, in case it's needed, you said consistent with the policies, and what was the rest of that sentence? I got the part about why reasonable to the public interest, just for my.
Yeah, I'll just read it verbatim, it's probably the easiest. So it states, concurrently with adopting, denying, or remanding any rezoning, town council shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town and explaining why the town council considers the action to be taken, action taken, sorry, to be reasonable and in the public interest.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of questions. So last council meeting, we heard, I guess, approval for some apartments in this vicinity. Is this, is this right next to the approval that you, are you aware of that, or?
Um, I'm not sure. Ben is saying no. Planning Director Howell says no. I was not at the last council meeting, I apologize.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing, and anyone wish to speak on this matter, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion. Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I would support this rezoning. I was just going to mention to my fellow council members here that it does look to me that it's consistent with current zoning in the area as well as the future land use map.
All right, anyone else?
I would say, with that being said, can we make a motion? Can do that? All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-02-01 with the statement of consistency and compatibility.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinances or further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Up next, under Old Business, is amending comprehensive lists of fees and charges.
Hello, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Joy Garretson, library director, and I am going to be talking to you tonight about our library out-of-town fee. I did want to mention that I am joined here tonight by a couple of members of our Friends of the Library, as well as a board member and a former staff member. If y'all just want to wave, I'm very excited to have them here with me tonight. So tonight's goal, I'm going to review the town's $25 out-of-town limit fee required for library use and recommend an action moving forward. In your packet, you should have the ordinance that we're looking to change. All right, so this question sort of starts with where our patrons live, and I want to give a little bit of a background to our discussion tonight. So in December, Councilman Thompson asked for me to look at getting at the $25 out-of-town fee. As things down currently, people who live within the town limits of the town of Clayton get free library services. They can access books, they can come to our programs, do whatever they want to do at the library for free. Anyone not living in the town limits, so that includes the ETJ and the surrounding area that wants to come to programs, they can come for free, but if they want to check out our library materials, do that basic library function, they have to pay a fee to use our materials. We have sort of a sliding fee schedule, but it's $10 for three months or $25 for an entire year. So you can do a three-month card for $10, six-month for 15, $25 per year. So looking at, this went into place in June of 2015. We were a part of the John, Public Library of Johnston County in Smithfield until that time. We separated in June of 2015. So to frame our discussion, I want to talk about where our patrons used to live, where they live now, and move forward from that. And just giving you sort of a frame of reference from how I look at it, I like to do research as I'm going into these presentations. And so as I was looking at where our town, our library card users currently live, I did a little bit of research about where people live in relation to the libraries that they use. And shocker, people tend to use the library that's closest, located, closest to them. So you can see from the following images that we don't pull that many patrons from the southeastern part of our county. This is from 2015. So these are our users whose cards expired on May 31st, 2015, which was our last day of service as part of the Public Library of Johnston County in Smithfield. And there are about 10,000 dots on this, on this screen. This is a GIS map. Michael Tutwiler helped me out with this. And you'll see that they're really clustered, that red line, the red outline there, and don't worry, this is not the only image I'm going to show you. You'll see more stuff that's closer up. But that red outline indicates the ETJ. So within that red outline is the town limits of Clayton. So this is back in 2015. That's about 10,000 card users there, a little, close to 10,600 card users there who did not renew their cards after May 31st. And now, I wanted to get a little bit closer in there, and it's kind of hard to see, but I think I have a pointer here. Oh, do I? Ah ha. If you get closer in there, you can see that we have clusters that go down 42. This is towards Flowers. We have a good number of people between Covered Bridge and the county line. Over on this side, out 40, 42, we've got a good number of people moving in towards Garner. So our current active patrons, that number is much smaller than the number was in 2015. Our current active patrons, you can see that we really have, within the town of Clayton, we have a good number of green dots, but in the ETJ, which is that red outline, you're starting to see some major gaps of service in that area. So people who live in the ETJ, we're definitely their closest library, but because they're not town limit, in the town limits, they have to pay $25 a year to use the card. And that goes also for, we still have a good number of people who live out towards Flowers, but you'll notice that as we get closer to, oop, hang on, ah, as we get closer to this line here, we really see a smaller number, and the same is true as you go out towards 40, 42. And I did a little close-up there. So the conclusion is just that we've lost patrons in that area between, going towards 40, 42, we've lost people between downtown and the county line, and we've also lost people between Covered Bridge and the county line, and then between Covered Bridge and 42. And so what does a loss of library use mean for our community? That means that people have a lower access to free educational, educational materials. And in many cases, people are either, if they're not driving to another library, they're spending that money at Amazon. They're spending that money to go across the county line to Wake County. So I wanted to look at some, oop, some pros and cons of having our fee. So the benefits of the out-of-town fee is that that $25 charge that we pass on to patrons living outside of our limits does help to mitigate the costs of running the library. In-town residents support the library's operations with their tax dollars, and out-of-town residents do not. So when we get that $25 fee, we are getting some, some money back to help with the running of the library. And we've gotten about $16,000 a year over the past six years that we've gotten this, that we've had this fee in place. That number's going to be smaller this year. We've seen from COVID, just a drop in usage overall, and so right now, we're on target to make about $13,000 for this, for this year. But there are a lot of issues caused by the out-of-town fee. Actually had a patron call me because she saw this presentation online and said, "I see that you wrote a benefit of the out-of-town fee, and I don't like that benefit." And I said, "Wait, wait, go to the rest of the presentation." But some of the issues are, number one, patron frustration. This is the issue that we see day after day after day, every single day. A patron comes in, a lot of times you'll have a family come in, they go into the kids' section, they carefully pick out books. They're so excited, they come to the desk, and they're like, "You know, we don't have a card, we just moved to town, we're so excited, we want to get these books." And we say, we look up their address, and we say, "Well, actually, you don't live in the town limits. It's going to be $25 to get that card. I didn't bring any money with me." And you have the situation where a family's so excited to use the library, and they're told two things that they didn't know before. One, that they're not a resident of this town. Two, that it's going to cost them to use the library. Sometimes we get those people back, a lot of times we never see them again. And it really creates an us-versus-them mentality. Yes, people who live in the town of Clayton support our library, but we're more than just the town limits. We are an area, and we know that. How many friends do you have that live in Flowers? How many friends do you have that live in Riverwood Golf Course? How many friends do you have that live in the ETJ or just right outside or towards Garner? How many wonderful board members do we have that are ETJ members? So we really hate that we're giving an us-versus-them mentality when our goal is to bring people together. And then a lot of people, like I mentioned, are unwilling or unable to pay that fee. $25 may not be much to you, but it's a lot of money to people who live on a fixed income. It's a lot of money to single parents who are. money to single parents who are bringing their children in for a free activity, to get free resources that they don't want to have to pay for, then they find out they've got to pay for them. And those costs negatively impact the people who need the library services most. Like I mentioned earlier, our would-be library users attend the library closest to them. And studies show, I looked at a study that looks at GIS maps, and they show that the people most harmed by a library being further away are people of color and people of a lower socioeconomic status. And that's not the message we want to get across. And then the trend in library services overall is really moving away from fines and fees. And so we are going against a lot of the trends that you'll see in library services these days. And then another really important point is staff time and morale. Our staff has this great script that they give to explain to people why they have to pay the out-of-town fee. Takes about five minutes. They have to deliver this with equanimity, with a very calm, hey, we still want you to come in even though you're not in town, message. And a lot of times, people snap at them. They argue with them, they fight with them, and it's not great for staff morale. And it really also hinders our outreach opportunities. It's hard for us to go to a school and say, half of you can come to the library for free. The rest of you, let's talk. So we really are hindered by what we're able to do in the community because we have a mixed message. And I've spoken to a number of people, including some of the friends that I have with me here tonight, talking about what they've experienced and what they've heard from people in town. If you go to any of our Nextdoor websites, or if you go to neighborhood sites, you'll see a lot of complaints about the out-of-town fee. And, and the confusion over the boundaries, and really going back to that us-versus-them mentality, when people move to Clayton, they don't know that they've moved right outside of the town limits. And I believe that we can make up for some of what we lose by not having those people who are paying taxes still being a part of our community and knowing that they are part of Clayton. Sorry. So now that we're stand, we do have some further considerations, though. So it is actually a great thing that we're a standalone library. I love being a municipal library because we have some great benefits. One is that we can receive state aid. We get about $16,000 a year. Our state aid, over the past five years, has been close to $15,000, but that's increasing. This year's is, I actually got an email right after I turned this presentation in that our state aid is going to be more like $17,000 this year. So we get a good chunk of funding from the state library. And then we also have the ability to get LSTA grants. Since I started here in 2017, we've brought in over $65,000 of LSTA grants. And that's in addition to other grants that we've gotten, like the Big Read Grant, which is a national, national grant. And then in FY '23, we're going to be moving to NC Cardinal. For the first two years that we use that system, we get it for free. And then after that, our catalog's only going to cost us around $2,500 a year. We currently pay about $6,300, plus the staff time and shipping and a lot of other internal costs. So we're going to have a long-term savings as we use NC Cardinal. And that's also going to connect us to libraries like the Public Library of Johnston County in Smithfield. So my recommendation to you tonight is to remove the $25 out-of-town fee for Johnston County residents. We know from just looking at the way the maps work, that our users are going to be from the Clayton area. We're not going to be pulling people so much from the bottom of the county. We're going to be pulling our neighbors, our people who live, who are going to be coming through here and spending their money in town as they visit the library and then stop and get lunch, go by Yellow House for something right after dinner. So we really believe it's in our best interest to remove that fee for Johnston County residents, and to really move our focus towards grant funding and charitable giving to make up some of those funds that we're losing by not having the fee. And at this time, I will take your questions. If you want to ask any of my people with me tonight a question, they'd be happy to answer as well.
I just got a comment that I think sometimes in a town, you have things, you have fees and things that kind of like a nuisance, but you just kind of deal with it, deal with them. But, and I've had some long conversations with Joy on this particular matter. And I think what has happened now is this become a deterrent. And that's, that looks bad for us, and especially what they have to deal with there at the library. So I'm very for just removal of this particular fee.
Mr. Thompson?
I agree with Mr. Sims. I think this has become a nuisance to our visitors. And I think it's a nuisance to our residents who have friends that, you know, one child's friend may live in Archery Lodge, and the other lives here, and they both want to come work on something at the library, and they can't without their friend having to pay a fee. Education should be free and available to everyone equally. And I think this also opens up opportunities to collaborate with our public school system, because it's exactly as, as Joy has said, how can you go into a school and say, y'all come to the library, but, but just some of you? I, I think that sends out a terrible message. And, you know, this isn't just about little children. This is about our senior citizens. This is about our active adults. This is everybody. The library should be free and available because it is a place for education and research and learning. So I appreciate this presentation. I feel like it was very well put together. I think your focus in showing that we have an ability for grant funding and other funding mechanisms, I, I just don't think this is going to be a loss for us at all. I think it'll be a gain.
I will be keeping my eye on the focus toward grant funding and charitable giving to make sure we continue to see strong increases in that. I'm curious to know if you have any information about the trend that's declining in library fees. Is that trend like municipal for municipalities, or is it beyond municipalities?
I would say across the state. I don't have the figures with me now, but libraries are going fine-free. Wake County was a big, huge deal. They went fine-free a couple of years ago. Every week, I'm getting another, Harnett County just went fine-free a couple weeks ago. Randolph County is trying to go fine-free. A number of counties are going fine-free because we're finding that fines actually keep people from coming back. A lot of times, if someone racks up a bunch of fines, the shame that they feel, which is, seems crazy, but they feel so ashamed that they don't come back, even if their fines are going to go away when they bring their items back. Every year, when we do our food drive in December to bring in, you know, let people do food for fines, we get a lot of stuff back. People are so glad, but they're embarrassed. I can't tell you how many people come up to me telling me how embarrassed they are that they have a late fee, which I'm always like, don't worry, so do I. We've got it. But yeah, I could definitely pull those numbers for you. You know, I know that it costs money to run a library, and I'm not, I have no, no bones about that. I understand it. But I know there's money out there, and we are doing our best to get that funding to bring it in. And your, our Friends of the Library could tell you that we lost a lot of charitable giving when we moved away from being, when we implemented the fee. And I think we're going to get that money back, because when you give people an opportunity to give out of their hearts, they're going to do it a lot more willingly than when they're paying a fee that they don't quite agree with. And I think, you know, we want to be good stewards of our, of our funding, and we want to get those grant dollars, and we want to get the donations, and we want it to be something where the whole community can come together.
Yes. And I would say without question that our library excels in taking their annual budget and making way more of it than most could. So congratulations to you and your staff for the wonderful fiscal responsibility that you utilize with our town library.
Thanks.
Because, you know, I don't know, it's 400-plus thousand a year in a budget for the library for the town of Clayton, which is coming, okay, so why don't you share with us what the annual budget is for the library?
This year, it was over $800,000.
So $800,000 of in-town taxpayer money going to provide the service for our residents. And I just want to make sure that we're being fair to those who are throwing money into the pot through taxes, that, you know, we, we still are looking ways to create revenue where everything doesn't have to be tax-based, because there are, there are others out there who are enjoying our services, but there are others out there who are paying for that to be able to be free to them on some level. So I just want us to, I'm all about reducing this fee. I support the vision and the goal, but I want us to keep in mind about business as well, and who is providing funding for what, and who is benefiting without contributing. So let's just, you know, work hard to continue that grant. You guys have been amazing with grant. I wish every department was as amazing with grant funding as you guys are. It's wonderful. And the charitable, charitable donations, which Clayton has always been very strong historically in making sure that our library has everything they need. So thank you very much. All right. So I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance 2022-02-02, our comprehensive fee list of charges.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Joy.
Thank you, council.
And Mayor? Up next is the budget amendments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we are asking two budget amendments that we're asking councils approve. The first one is with the general fund. We're asking council to approve two positions. One is the fire equipment operator position at an annual salary of $50,000 plus benefits. And the second one is a warehouse coordinator position at an annual salary of $45,000 plus benefits. It's expected both of these positions will result in a more efficient and effective operations. I've been here 13 years now, and during that time, we for the most part have only had one person in the warehouse. It's very difficult to operate a warehouse in a first-class manner with this one person. So really, two is basically the absolute minimum that we need, particularly where we're at now in our size and what we're trying to achieve. The second item with the general fund is to appropriate fund balance, to procure a new hook lift truck. And for those of you who don't know what a hook lift truck is, or are wondering what it is, it's basically a, a heavy-duty truck chassis that allows you to, has a hydraulic hoist on it, system, allows you to interchange bodies. So you can put a dump body on it. You could put a flatbed or a container. So that's going to give us a lot of flexibility to operate and manage a town's fleet. The next budget amendment is involved with the water sewer fund, and that's position-related as well. We're asking to, two new wastewater treatment plant operators, and those are needed to support the operation of the new Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility when it comes online. Both those positions are at $45,000 plus benefits. So I want to, all these positions will be recurring costs if they're approved tonight as we move forward into subsequent fiscal years. So I want to point that out, that it's not a one-time thing. It's, it's be an ongoing cost. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer any.
Questions or comments for staff?
I have a question. Just back on the truck, and again, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to grasp this. So you said that you're able to put different bodies onto the truck?
Different bodies. It has a hydraulic hoist on the chassis, so you can interchange the bodies. So you could put, functionality-wise, it could be a dump truck one day, and then the next day, it could be a container. It could be a flatbed.
Got you. So what about the, the bodies? Are we going to need the bodies? Does that come? Is that all one package?
We're, we're buying it with, I'll let Rusty here. Rusty here is kind of coordinating the deal. He can probably address actually what we're, the bodies we're buying. But yes, you will have to have multiple bodies to be able to use that system.
Hey, Mayor, Council. Rusty, I'm Street Park Superintendent. So the bodies we're getting with this purchase, we're purchasing a dump truck body, a dumpster body. We'll have a flatbed. There will be a snow plow with this truck. There will also be a salt sand spreader along with this truck, because we've got two that are older that we're going to have to take out of service, the plow and spreader. So we're getting a brand-new one with this purchase. And then in the future, we can budget for asphalt box to go on this truck, a brine sprayer to go on this truck, a leaf collection box to go on this truck. There's many, many bed options, a concrete mixer. We could go to the plant, get our own concrete. We're not waiting for a concrete truck to get here to fix sidewalks, curbs. We can haul our own stuff. And this truck's a multi-use truck, so this, it'll get used every day instead of a specific truck that we use for one specific thing. And then it has to sit till we need that specific service again.
So, and, and again, please correct me. So then there's five, it's like a package, about five bodies, I think that's what I wrote down, that, that comes with this?
Yes, sir.
Right off the bat. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Robert. Turn it over to the council for their discussion. Ms. Archer?
Seems like a good investment in a vehicle, something that's multi-use, that can get a lot of different functions solved without tying up a lot of storage space for multiple vehicles. And then I did want to just say about the operator positions for the, the new water reclamation facility. I think it's a great idea that we're getting that laid out now and getting people in those positions now, getting ahead of the ball. So I would support both of these ordinances.
Are you making that in the form of a motion?
I can make that a form of the motion, a motion. A motion to adopt ordinance number, do we need to do them both separately, I would imagine?
No, you can do it all.
Okay. 2022-02-03 and ordinance 2022-02-04.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of those two stated ordinances. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Up next is the ADA informational update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dolores Hill, Deputy Town Manager. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to talk about a plan that has been quite a while in coming that will be comprehensive and will lead the town forward in making some much-needed adjustments and modifications to several areas of our town. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 does require all public agencies to conduct a self-evaluation and prepare an ADA transition plan. We have been delighted to have Stewart Engineering as our preferred vendor, and they are endorsed by the North Carolina League of Municipalities for ADA transition plans, and the town contracted with them to begin to do this work with us on February 4 of 2020 for a fee of $36,195. The ADA transition plan included a self-evaluation in several areas, and the transition plan included public participation in a public meeting, which was conducted on August 3, 2021, and a public survey that was posted on our town website. And the survey results are summarized in the plan that you have. The town has provided funding in the amount this year of $150,000 for street, right-of-way, ADA, curb ramp improvements, and $50,000 for building retrofits. The ADA transition plans and prioritizations are going to be presented to you by Stewart Engineering this evening. This will help us to create both short and long-range programs and processes to complete this work. And the ADA transition plan does not have a specific deadline, but we need to be making consistent and continued progress towards meeting these goals. We are very excited to have Harrison Winchell here and his team from Stewart Engineering. As a part of this very long process we've had in going through this very thorough process of creating this plan, I'd like to thank several folks on our town staff team, Nathaniel Shelton, Craig Wood, Rusty Clausen, our Parks and Rec staff, and many others who were literally out doing all of these surveys and all of these assessments of all areas of town to be able to provide the information to Stewart Engineering. So at this time, I'd like to call up the Stewart Engineering team. They're going to take you through a presentation. At the end of the presentation, I will seek your approval of this plan. We already have an area ready for it on our town website, and it will be a working plan. We will be providing updates as we move along. And as the ADA coordinator for the town, I will be making reports back to you and working with several departments within the town to plan for and fund and implement these changes that are necessary. So at this time, Harrison, I hope you're somewhere. Where are you? Here he is. Here he is. And you do have the plan in your packet.
I thought that was yours. I did tell you.
Okay, good evening, and thanks for having us tonight to discuss and present the ADA transition plan. My name is Harrison Winchell. I'm the transportation planning team lead for Stewart. With me tonight are Doug Taylor, our Transportation Practice Area Leader, and Joan Lyons, also a transportation planner with Stewart. We've completed the ADA transition plan, which Dolores mentioned started in February 2020, which will essentially guide the town to full accessibility under ADA over a five-year period. So I'll talk briefly about the historical context, and then I'll talk a little bit about what our roles and responsibilities were throughout this process. So per Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, municipalities are required to have a plan in place to accommodate those who may use public facilities. Federal funding can be withheld unless there's a play, plan in place or in the works. So you guys have already checked that requirement. There's also various federal requirements that apply to areas in the public right-of-way as well as areas that pertain to the facilities. And so what we did throughout this process is, you know, cross-reference all of those requirements during the self-evaluation process to ensure that the transition plan meets all of the necessary requirements under the ADA. As far as the roles and responsibilities, so the town's roles mainly were project oversight, public involvement, the facility assessments of parks and buildings, and then ideally, once the, the plan is adopted, it'll be the ongoing maintenance of the plan itself as a, as a living document. And then for Stewart, what our roles were, we had the overall project management, maintained bi-weekly meetings to keep the schedule on target, public right-of-way data collection, public involvement as well, facility assessment training to town staff, and the development of the ADA transition plan itself. So this slide is a, a good overview of some of the main stages to the transition planning process. The very first thing that we did was establish an ADA coordinator, a public notice and agreements procedure to essentially notify the public what you're doing and why you're doing it, and the fact that they can be plugged in to the process as more information becomes available. Pretty quickly moved into public involvement, which can be summarized in three main phases. So we had an online survey, about 12 questions. We had direct outreach to stakeholders or disability groups in, in the community, whether it's individuals, agencies. We also provided the online survey link to those stakeholders to have them distribute it to their networks. And the third phase to the public involvement piece was the public meeting, which was held on August 3rd, 2021. Simultaneously to public involvement is the self-evaluation process, which is essentially our data collection period. That's also three main phases. So in terms of self-evaluation, we evaluated the town program, services, activities, website. The second phase is the assessment of the facilities, so buildings and parks, and the third phase being data collection within the public right-of-way, so any curb ramps or hazards that we identified in our surveyed area. All of that, public involvement, all of that data collection boils into the transition plan. So within the transition plan itself, we have action items, recommendations, and priorities in order to remove what were identified as barriers to accessibility under, under federal law and bring the town into full ADA compliance across all the areas that I mentioned. As you move, once the plan is adopted, and kind of simultaneously with the development of the transition plan was funding implementation, which will be something that's ongoing over the five-year lifecycle of this initial plan. So in addition to the money that has already been allocated, there's going to be varying funding implications that are going to need either additional funding through the CIP or other sources like DOT's TAP or CMAC funds for curb ramp and sidewalk projects. And as you move towards that last bubble there in the center, monitor the progress. I'll get into that a little more in a minute. But essentially, it's an ongoing plan, a living document, like I've mentioned, and really, you know, you'd be kind of taking that punch list, the, the maps, the tables that we've put together in this transition plan, and over that five-year cycle, chipping away towards full ADA compliance. So this summarizes the data collection that we did as part of this process. The self-evaluation of those town policies, programs, really focused on administrative requirements, effective communication, general nondiscrimination, website accessibility, and program accessibility. In terms of the data collection for the public right-of-way, we surveyed just over two miles, mainly focusing on the downtown area, but the rest of town was covered by an outside consultant as well. So all town sidewalk infrastructure has been captured. So with our surveyed area, that was part of our scope, we had 109 curb ramps and 86 hazards identified, whether that's a driveway cut, you know, debris in the public right-of-way, a trip hazard. There's a variety of different things that, that it could be. I've already mentioned that the public meeting was held on August 3rd of 2021. Do you want to point out that the online survey we developed had 450 survey, 457 survey responses, which is easily one of the highest, if not the highest, out of the different municipalities that we've worked with. It's a great, you know, starting point. It was, it was definitely very informative to the plan and some of the recommendations that made it into the plan. But there is definitely a plugged-in community, and that's definitely a credit to Dolores and Nathaniel kind of getting the word out there with the survey and really kind of making sure that, you know, we got as many eyes on it as possible. So because this was a two-year process, while the plan was, was being developed and some of this data collection was going on, there are improvements that have already been made. So on the administrative side, the recent website update now complies with accessibility standards. Previously, it did not, so that was one of the things that actually is still in the plan. You know, we knew that the website overhaul was, was a work in progress, but that's now something that's been checked off. And then as far as physical barriers, 78 existing ramps have been retrofitted and 35 new ramps, ADA-compliant ramps have been constructed. There's been over 1,000 feet of newly constructed sidewalk and/or greenway, and there's various tripping hazards that have been fixed in the Glen Laurel subdivision and the community This is a list of all the facilities that we assessed, so everything from town hall to the fire departments, the parks, even cemeteries, and essentially anything that is publicly owned or accessible. Public participation, I've touched on these three main phases. The survey was, was by far our, you know, main source of public involvement for the process. As far as the direct outreach to stakeholders, we did include the full list in Appendix C of the report as far as who was contacted, but some examples include the Bethesda Family Care Home, Clayton Center for Active Aging, and Community and Senior Services of Johnston County. The public meeting that we had in August of last year was recorded, and it is still active on the town's YouTube page as well. The next few slides just kind of cover the survey. So the survey itself really targeted accessibility to town sidewalks, town parks and buildings. We asked about, you know, any accessibility challenges that people experienced. We asked for them to prioritize areas of where they would want to see improvements made, and we incorporated all that information into the transition plan. Generally speaking, without getting into every single question, but really, the, the key takeaways from public involvement were better accessibility to some of the gaps, where there's, there's gaps in the sidewalk network, you know, the restrooms in some of the park and rec facilities are a little dated, so things along those lines. And then a lot of people also mentioned accessible parking, just across, on a townwide level, having more accessible parking. That's also something that we did with town staff is to identify some of those gaps where there needs to be more accessible parking in order to be compliant. And then there's also measures that the town can take to go above and beyond what the, the basic requirements are for the number of accessible parking spaces available. So I'll skip ahead to our priorities slide. So within the plan, we have short, mid, and long-term priorities that are identified. So the short-term priorities are going to be the projects that are typically able to be completed in less than a year, can be absorbed into a general maintenance budget. So more, you know, simple things like striping parking, accessible parking spaces, replacing door hardware, even signage for accessible parking. Midterm priority projects are usually going to be in that one-to-three-year window with annual budgeting necessary. Those are going to be a little more substantial, so, you know, handrails for an access ramp, replacing a water fountain, grab, grab bars in a restroom facility, just to name a few. And then the long-term priority projects are going to be more your permanent improvements, three to five years or more. Like I mentioned earlier, costs either funded through the CIP or other sources, and those are going to be, you know, structural changes to buildings, reconfiguring a bathroom, creating an accessible route to various facilities, things of that nature. As far as monitoring the progress, so like I said, we're seeking adoption of the transition plan tonight, but once the plan is adopted, it kickstarts a, a five-year window in which the town will be working at the barriers to accessibility that were identified in the plan. Once every five years, the plan will be updated and presented again to town council for adoption. And ideally, you know, the, the town will be kind of targeting towards full ADA compliance over that timeline. So if things aren't completed in that five-year window, they get carried over into the next five-year period. But I think Dolores definitely has it under control. So the other thing I want to point out is, we recommend at least once per year to identify kind of the prioritization and, and, you know, kind of plan out the schedule as far as the improvements that are need, need to be made within the plan. We, we recommend, you know, doing that more frequently, especially, you know, with Dolores being the ADA coordinator. Up front, it's a bigger lift. It'll definitely be, you know, a, a good amount of information to kind of make sure that all that information is set up, everything's programmed in, you know, public work schedules and all that kind of thing. You know, proper funding is there to, to do the improvements. Something else I want to mention is the, so any substantial update to the main body of the document would require a public comment period. Now, regularly chipping away at the, the priority improvements that we identified in the project does not necessitate a public comment period, but if you were to change anything about the, the overall intent, the purpose and need of the document, that would require something. Otherwise, if you're just working towards compliance, you don't have to worry, you've already done that in this, the past two-year process. And then additionally, the annual reviews and kind of the development of the CIP should coincide with, you know, just the facility inspections and making sure that everything has been, you know, evaluated, seeing, you know, what has been done in the, in the previous year, and what projects need to be potentially incorporated into that CIP or additional With that, I will turn it over to see if there's any comments or questions.
Questions or comments from council? All right. Mr. Thompson.
I appreciate the hard work. This is obviously not a quick task and not something that's a paper-driven type. This is labor-intensive and involves a lot of our departments in, all across our town government. So there's big impacts from this plan, and one of the things that I think we, we have an obligation, you know, not just legally but morally, is to make sure that we provide accessibility for every citizen, and they should have access to all of our facilities, all of our sidewalks, all of our bathrooms, and I think this is a good step towards showing that, that we're doing right by everybody.
Agree. Anyone else? Awesome. Thank you.
And with that, I just ask for council's approval to move forward with our plan.
Absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve of the ADA transition plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the ADA transition plan. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the Payton Drive purchase agreement.
Good evening, Mayor. Town Council, Joshua Baird, Engineering Director. As part of the Riverwood development several years ago, approximately one and a half acres was developed, or was donated to the town to construct a connection from Riverwood out to Covered Bridge. As part of that, the town took on a project and built that connection that's known as Payton Drive, completed that in 2020, I guess, last year, 2020, or end of last, beginning of '21 into 2020. As part of that, the town took that piece of property and actually went through a subdivision, so carved out that section of right-of-way, and in doing so, left two remnant pieces of property, one to the north and one to the south, that was left over from that right-of-way once Payton Drive was constructed. To the north, this is just a picture of the subdivision there. You can see that there are some associated easements dealing with the slopes and drainage easements that were obtained on the, on the northern piece of property just to support the right-of-way. And then also, this is not zoomed in very well, but Duke Energy also has an existing easement for a feeder through the middle of the property. So the remnant piece of property is encumbered by several easements. The adjacent property owner to the north has indicated that they have interest in purchasing the remnant piece of property from the town. I was completely aware of all the encumbrances by the town's easements for slope and drainage as well as Duke Energy's easements, but still has interest. The owner has submitted to the town an offer to purchase and a deposit, and in doing so to sell the property, the town would need to initiate the upset bid process. Staff does not have any specific plans for the remnant piece of property and open to the conversation. So tonight, I'm before you seeking authorization to proceed with the upset bid process for the attorney to move forward with that. The adjacent property owner's initial offer is of $6,000, and they have put up a 5% deposit. So the request tonight would be to initiate the upset bid process and request authorization for the town attorney to start that process. You're not accepting and signing the purchase agreement that is in the notes tonight. That is just what was utilized as the offer from the adjointing property owner. Upon completion of the upset bid process, I will be back before you with an actual agreement to purchase and an actual amount following the 10-day upset bid process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for staff?
So just for clarification, is this the property on both sides of Payton Drive?
No, so it was divided separately. This is just the piece to the north. We would still retain the sou, southern piece.
Do we have any interest in selling that as well, or?
I mean, I, I'm not aware of any specific, specific uses for the south. It's a non-conforming lot. It's just thin and small piece there, and also encumbered by easements. So, I mean, if someone was interested, I assume so. Again, both of these are encumbered by quite a few easements. And this was initiated by the adjoining, adjacent owner. We, we really did not initiate the sale of these, it just, the question and the request came to us.
Your show.
I make a motion to proceed with the upset bid process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with the upset bid process. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to jump on down to a quick staff report, beginning with the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really, one, wanted to thank you guys for approval of the budget amendment. Obviously, the supply chain impacts continue to hurt us in terms of accessing needed equipment, so being able to get that order for the truck in right now will really help us in the, basically in the better part of a year. As well as the positions, that wastewater treatment plant, those two positions, I do want to mention, the North Carolina Rural Water Association does have an apprenticeship program. does have an apprenticeship program where effectively they've gone through and vetted several candidates that would be qualified to enter into that, entered into that profession. As you can imagine, it is a tough profession for somebody to wake up one day and say, "That's what I want to do." So this is really going to be a pipeline, hopefully, that we can access moving forward. So we're excited to try to fill those two positions. Obviously, it'll be open to everybody, but good to know that the Rural Water Association does have some candidates that are interested in working in our area. So other than that, just a reminder of retreat coming up on the 15th, 16th, and 17th. The final agenda for those, basically, three days of programming will be coming your way here in the next day or two, but if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out in the meantime. Other than that, that's it.
Thanks, sir. Town attorney?
No reports.
Town clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Under other staff, economic development.
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. We'll make this quick, but wanted to make you all aware of a new resource that we've been able to put together, which is a Doing Business Guide in Clayton. So this is a, this was on our kind of Q, I guess it'd be Q2 to-do list here. It was part of the Economic Development Strategy Plan here, and I want to give a lot of credit to Lydia Davis, a relatively new economic development specialist who really took the lead on this. Part of the important piece here is really pulling together across departments information on how you tackle this thing in terms of coming here to do business. We did take a lot of examples from other towns that have done similar guides and use kind of the best practices there, and frankly, have seen examples on Pre Apps recently where we wish people had this guide because it probably would have made their life a little bit easier. So with that, I want to have Lydia run through this, just some of the highlights here, just so you know it's available, so when folks are, that in the community they're talking about wanting to do business here, that you've got this resource and know of it, and really just highlight, it can apply to any business, it's really targeted at small businesses because those are usually the ones that don't have the resources to hire consultants and other things like that to get them set up. So we want to make sure we get them, give them as much opportunity as possible to succeed here in the town of Clayton, and with that, I will hand it over to Lydia.
Good evening, y'all. As Patrick mentioned, this guide is not exhaustive, and a lot of the disclaimers he just went through are listed on the introductory page of the guide, so that anyone reading it knows upfront who it's intended to be used by and how. But essentially, it breaks the process down of opening a business into seven steps, and this is intended for existing buildings, not for folks who are looking to build new buildings. But it starts all the way from verifying zoning and land use, to permits, to utilities, to signage, and getting ready to open, so. And breaks that down into seven steps. Here's an example of what one of those content pages would look like. This page is step three, apply for permits, but each page follows a very similar format in that there's the progress bar at the top, turning green as they have flipped a page and explored the next step, links to all the referenced information, they are hot links in the PDF, they can click directly on the underlying text and it'll pop up whatever's being referenced, and then the summary box at the top calling out any important information or reiterating content from that page. This is some examples of some supplemental pages in the guide, so one of these pages includes the definitions of the different zoning districts, resources on the town, county, and state level, contact information is in the guide for each of the different departments represented, and then other information about how new businesses can get involved or learn more. And then last page, short and sweet, implementation on how we'll be using the guide. It does currently live on the town's economic development page, just on the homepage right there for our department. It'll also be utilized by the plannings page in the "How Do I?" tab that's on the new website. We'll be able to share it with community partners such as the Clayton Chamber of Commerce, who are also in touch with many new businesses. It can be shared on social media, or callouts can be shared, printed copies can be kept on hand, it's only about a 10-page PDF, so it's relatively short and to the point, so those relevant town departments can have it on hand, and then of course, we can utilize it as a resource to send it via email when needed, when any individuals may have questions. So that's it. If there's anyone else having questions.
That is awesome.
Thank you.
That is awesome, and I sit here and I look at all this and I think, "Wonder why we never had this before," you know? So thank you both. That's wonderful.
I invite you to view the full guide in all of its entirety on our website.
Awesome.
I would definitely say, who's like, small businesses are the backbone of any community, so this is awesome work that you guys have literally, you guys are investing in small businesses, just doing this work right here. Thank you. You guys are amazing.
I think this is good. I love it, I think it's outstanding. I think it can even grow a little bit more. Do we have, or do we have anything, or are you looking to put anything in place that would solicit from people who use this, "Hey, what, you know, do you think there's some improvement or something else that we could add on to that," or do you have some little space or asking for comments to come back on, you know, "What would you like to see?" Or, you know, just to, again, it's almost like a living, breathing document where it can grow, where somebody as a new business can say, "Well, you know, hey, this is really good, but I would like to also see this."
Yeah, to add to what you're saying, this has already gone through all the different departments, and we actually had the DDA advisory board take a look at it, too. Many of them are business owners, so we got some of their feedback, and certainly, there's room for it to grow. It's targeted right now, as Patrick mentioned, at small businesses, which we've deemed as less than 500 employees with already existing buildings, but there's tons of ways to morph this guide into something that can represent and be helpful for many more people doing many different types of projects. Anything to add?
Yeah, no, I'd say, I think we want to certainly figure out a way to, you know, this can't be a static document because it represents codes that are changing, it represents other things that are changing in resources, so as we hear of things and want to certainly solicit as people are using it, you know, is this actually helpful? Is this hitting the mark? Is there's things we missed? It's not going to be everything to everyone and go into all the detail because we probably have to have a booklet as large as Dale's accomplishments. But, you know, but we wanted to give people a starting point and a good point to be able to get in and get their foot in the door, and a lot of that comes with, make sure you come see us before you sign a lease, because that's always an important thing, so you know what you can actually do with your space. And on that, I want to just give credit to the other departments because a lot of other people chipped in, and Lydia did a great job getting this out to folks, taking that feedback and incorporating about as many things around the town, it really takes all of us chipping in together because it's usually not just one silo, it's all of us working together, so.
Awesome.
Appreciate all the feedback.
Okay.
I think this is fantastic. It creates that transparency that we're looking for when a business tries to come into town. Serving on the Board of Adjustments, we heard a case, me and Mr. Sims did, where this could have been perfect for them, for a business owner, and it was, I guess, electricity's being transferred over. So I'd like to maybe see this be sent via email or so, anytime a business is trying to transfer their power over. Hopefully, that's not too late in the process, but I think this is fantastic.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? No one wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council for comments.
Yes, I just want to publicly just thank Dolores Rich, the planning director, for the enlightening tour that they took us on as far as just the understanding of certain things from a municipality standpoint. Being a new council person, it was very informative, very well done, and again, I just want to say publicly, just thank you guys for everything that you guys put together. Appreciate it.
Very cool.
Porter?
I have a comment. So this past Friday, I guess there was a high school student that was hit crossing over Robertson Street on Highway 70. I know the town works the DOT, they've worked really hard to get that crosswalk there. I drive on Highway 70 quite a bit, it seems like a lot of the kids and all sorts of people don't necessarily use that crosswalk. I don't know if we can kind of take the charge or the initiative, but I'd like to see if there's something we could do to educate the high school kids, because for some reason or another, they do not want to use the crosswalk. They will walk, they won't take the extra 25 yards to walk to the intersection there and use the crosswalk, they'll try to cut in front. Matter of fact, that happened on Friday. Saturday, I was out and about around 7 o'clock that night, sure enough, there's a kid just cutting through, not even trying to go to the crosswalk. So I don't know if we can take the initiative on that, or if there's something we can do to work with the school, if it's, do something creative, maybe put some signage up, you know, something simple, but they're going back and forth and they're just not using it. I just don't want to see somebody else get hit, I don't want to see somebody get killed. It's just, I don't know what we can do, but I'd like to try to come up with something.
Well, let me give you a little bit of history. That dilemma has been going on with Clayton High School for over 20 years, and students at the beginning of every school year, when they assemble, are told what the dangers are and how it is not looked upon favorably. Parents continue to allow kids and support them to be able to cross over a highway, so I've experienced very limited parental involvement on this particular topic. I think it's safe to say that there is nowhere on Highway 70 from 40 all the way to the bypass that is made or created to be pedestrian-friendly, and the objective with that is the NCDATs not wanting it to be a place where people can walk and travel from north to south or south to north. So when we had Senator Rick Horner, yes, he was able to get some additional funding for his jurisdiction at the time, and that is where the funding came from for what we have there now. And it was very welcomed, very well-received, very much appreciated. It was something that met the requirement for how they would like to have seen the money be invested, and that's as far as we've gotten. But the comments that I have seen on social media about why the town of Clayton doesn't build a bridge to go over Highway 70, or why someone doesn't do something about the issue and the danger of children crossing to go to McDonald's, you know, I think we need to do our part. I think signage out there would be huge, and I know it sounds funny, but it should really say, you know, "Enter at your own risk," because that is not what that is developed for. It is not developed at all, at all, for pedestrian crossover, at all. So, you know, yes, you're absolutely on task, we need to address this, maybe we have a little, send some members of council to go meet with staff, school board people, or just here, local high school administration, to just reiterate our conversation, but, you know, it's like something we've been dealing with for 20 years, and it's just getting, you know, nobody's listening, so it's falling on deaf ears, which for me is frustrating.
Mr. Thompson?
I think it's a good opportunity for us to use our public information office, you know, especially since the office has grown, perhaps, you know, we can participate with them, get our public safety leadership from firing police together, and maybe make some sort of a video or something that we can post on a YouTube channel to raise awareness, but something also that can be shown in the schools. They all have televisions in the classrooms and a means to deliver these things to their students, and maybe that's our town of Clayton commercial of, "Hey, this is dangerous, this is, if you're going to do it, this is how you need to do it." And I think, you know, it doesn't have to be longer or elaborate, but something, maybe a short PSA developed by the PIO office that can be shared with our schools, I think would be super helpful.
What we'll do is, we do have our internal traffic and safety committee, they do meet monthly, so we'll go ahead and kick that to them and to work with the PIO office to go ahead and evaluate the crossing itself, just to see if there is any additional signage or other opportunities to educate at that level, as well as look at some sort of PSA that we can pull together.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, that's perfect.
No? Okay, cool.
Can I add to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One idea, if you do head, send it to the internal staff committee, and if they are going to put together some sort of social media, would maybe be to engage the student government at the high school and ask for their input, because sometimes they know what to word or what to say to make it kind of catchy. It might help, maybe not.
Yeah. Anything to help make it safer, and communication, I'm all about it, but it just, based on results, it seems like every time we have a round of communication regarding this topic, that it just falls on deaf ears, and then, you know, for me, to be out of town and get a report that this has gone on in Clayton, and I'm like, "Man, it's so hard, it's so senseless," you know? All right, anyone else? All right. Mr. Thompson?
As most everybody knows by now, it's, we've had about three weekends of bad weather, and our staff have been amazing, working through it all, keeping us as elected officials updated, but not just us, but the entire community through the public information that's gone out, and I will always stand behind, you know, that we do it best, you know, all you have to do is travel to some neighboring areas to see where you can't even drive across the road without sliding in a ditch, and you could drive on any street in Clayton. And the team approach and the leadership of Deputy Manager Barbie, especially, and him engaging and pulling the groups together across the board, really got us through with no hiccups. It was great for us.
Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. All right. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session after a 10-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.